Good morning, and welcome to June 1st, today's meeting. The Board of Education, call to order, please, so a roll call, please, Ms. Harrington.
Mr. Bennington.
I am here.
Mrs. Downs.
Here.
Mrs. Eubank.
Here.
Ms. Laramer.
Here.
Mr. Pullman.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Perrysburg Schools welcomes you here into Commodore Building, and those online watching and viewing, or perhaps viewing later. We thank you for attending today's morning work session. We care about the safety of our students, our staff, our families, and guests. Please note that there are exits to the left and to the right of you, and to the right of myself. And also, there's an AED located right outside the cafeteria doors. Located at 140 East Indiana Avenue. We thank you again for supporting Perrysburg Schools. We do have an agenda change. If you would notice, Board, 5.3, we're going to move 5.3 to 6.3. 5.3 will be moved to 6.3, so we'll move it out of the consent agenda.
Is there any way we could move it to right after the presentation?
We could. As long as we, yeah, we could, if that would be Board's choosing.
I didn't hear her question, what was it?
I would like to move 5.3 to after the presentation.
So 4.1.
And that would make it 4.1?
Well, no, it'd be 3.2.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I could do that.
You make it 3.2?
Um, yeah, I'll, um...
You want me to do it, Tom?
I'm kind of...
Any other discussion on that move? So we'll move item 5.3 up, actually, to then 3.2. So 3.2. Thank you, Mrs. Downs.
Thank you.
And motion to accept the proposed agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laramer.
Yes.
Mrs. Downs.
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank.
Yes.
Mr. Pullman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennington.
Yes. Motion carries. And now we'll go to Superintendent's report, Mr. Hassler.
All right, thank you. This morning, first of all, just apologize for the delay with the meeting. We had some technical difficulties that we were fortunate to work out. So, um, so this morning, we're very excited. Dr. Andrea Glasser is here to, um, to share a little bit about, um, Section 504. Uh, this is something that folks may have, have heard about from different, you know, from time to time, in terms of services that school districts provide students. And there's not a lot known about, well, what is a 504? Um, sometimes people think it's something related to special education. Sometimes they think it's something that is, is outside special education. Um, we do know that, that, um, there are a number of students that, that have 504 plans. And we thought this would be a great opportunity to talk about what it is, and how the district serves students who are on 504s, and the impact that it has on staff. So, um, so with that, um, we will turn it over to Dr. Glasser, and she'll introduce, uh, the team that'll be helping her present, so... And then I'm going to flip to that, um, screen share.
Thank you. Good morning, I hope you guys all had a nice, long weekend. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present on this this morning. We shared some of this information with our board committee a couple of weeks ago, and on Gretchen's recommendation, I'm back again. So, I want to introduce, and I'm not sure if you can see them or not, um, obviously, the school year's over, so some of our staff are taking a quick little break. But we do have Kristen Lee with us today, she's the school counselor at Fort Megs Elementary School. And Elena Sig, who is the school counselor at Perrysburg High School. So we'll, they'll be jumping in, they're on Zoom, so thanks for your patience with technology, as we kind of do a shared presentation here.
Hassler, could you unmute your computer so we can hear the presentation?
Um, my computer is unmuted.
All right, Kelly's going to grab the light, so you guys can see a little bit better. This is obviously linked in the, um, agenda as well. But I just wanted to start by sharing a quick overview of what Section 504 is. Uh, like Mr. Hassler said, everyone's heard of it, but people often don't understand exactly what it is. So, Section 504 is actually, um, called that because it's Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Which is a federal law that prohibits disability discrimination in federally funded programs and activities. So, what that means for school districts, and that applies to lots of, um, agencies, anyone who receives federal funding, so not just schools, but what it means for schools is a couple of things. One is that we must not discriminate against a qualified disabled person on the basis of disability. So someone who's qualified under Section 504 would be eligible for those protections. And we'll talk about that eligibility piece as we go through this. And...
Andrea, let me stop you, they're having difficulty hearing this. So let me... Your presenters can't hear, so let me try to... All right, can you hear now? Okay, all right. Okay, I think we're in business now.
All right.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, the other piece that, um, is a district obligation under Section 504 is that we must provide a free and appropriate public education to each qualified disabled person who is in the district's jurisdiction. So you often hear that FAP reference, that Free and Appropriate Public Education, in terms of special education. Uh, the reason for that is, special education actually falls under the Section 504 umbrella. So the Section 504 umbrella is more widespread even than special education, which does meet those requirements. So simply put, the district and its employees may not treat a qualified disabled person differently from other students on the basis of his or her disability. Okay, so we have a couple of things just to kind of get you guys thinking. So because it's a federal mandate, school districts receive funding for Section 504. Do you guys think this is true or false?
I'm just going to default to false.
Ray said he studied, so that, that may, he may have an advantage. So yeah, it's false. So even though it's, we're federally mandated to follow all of the requirements of Section 504, there's no funding for school districts to provide those services. And then in terms of looking at eligibility for a Section 504 plan, this is definitely different than what we look at for special education under IDEA. So under Section 504, to be eligible, what we need to see is a, is the presence of a physical or mental impairment which substantially limits one or more major life activities. Simple, right? That's a lot of words in there. Um, so for physical or mental impairment, what Section 504 defines is that it's a physiological disorder or condition, cosmetic disfigurement, anatomical loss, that affects one or more body systems, or any mental or physiological disorder, or psychological disorder. So, basically, a diagnosed condition that meets those criterias. And then the major life activities encompasses lots and lots of things. Some of the big ones we see a lot is caring for oneself, performing manual tasks, uh, walking, seeing, hearing, learning, um, working, speaking. And then the nature and severity piece, what we're, or this is substantial limitation, what we're always looking at is the nature and the severity of the impairment. So just having an impairment doesn't mean it substantially limits a, a major life activity. We're looking at how it substantially limits, and that's part of that eligibility process. I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Lee at this point. Hopefully.
I'm looking at slide six, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a similarity between the process of identifying for, or special education, and the process for identifying a student under Section 504. And this slide kind of highlights that process, that we, um, identify the child with a disability, we go through an evaluation. Um, for an IEP, for special education, it's an IEP, for 504, it's a Section 504 plan. And then there's that continuous progress monitoring. Um, what I want to highlight in this slide are specific, um, individuals that are tasked with those, um, different, the different parts of that process. With an IEP, that process is, um, divided between the school psychologist, who's been trained in evaluations, and the, um, intervention specialist or related service now, that are also trained in writing goals for an IEP and progress monitoring. Under Section 504, you'll see that currently, school counselors are tasked with that entire process. From identifying, to evaluating, to creating a plan, to progress monitoring. So there is a difference there, um, in the, the, what we're identifying, as well as the personnel that's involved. And then the next graphic does a great job of explaining how this all works. Um, we start with a referral, and for an IEP, that referral is an academic referral. Um, there's something that is impacting their learning in the educational setting. Um, and so, that comes from a classroom teacher, or it comes from someone in the classroom. For a 504, it might come from a variety of resources. It might come from the classroom teacher, um, it might, that says, this child is having a really hard time paying attention. I, I might suspect that there's something going on. Um, it might come from the school nurse, who says, they've been in the clinic a lot. Um, is there something going on? It might come from an attendance secretary, that says, they've been out a lot, do you know what's going on? Um, so those referrals might come from, of multiple different resources. So it's our job to investigate, is the, is there a disability, do we suspect a disability? Then we move into, um, if we suspected disability, we move into the evaluation, um, process. And we gather information from lots of different resources, we include the parent, the teacher, um, academic records, and so forth. And we determine in that meeting as a team, if the child is eligible for Section 504.
Kristen.
Then if we decide that it is, uh, the student is eligible, we move on to a plan. Um, and the plan, we write accommodations so that the child can meet, um, the, we meet the needs of the child so that they can access the curriculum, the general education curriculum. And that is, the plan is an annual plan, so every year it is reviewed. Um, we then move into lots of case management. Um, so we have to communicate with the teachers, we communicate with the attendance secretaries. We do a lot of progress monitoring in that one-year period. And then at the end of the year, we get feedback, feedback from the parent, from the teachers. Um, we look at discipline, we look at attendance, we look at changes, have they used their accommodations? And if not, then we need to make revisions. So every single year, we go around that small loop. Um, we might take that light pink arrow, um, every year, and then on the third year, we have to do the big loop and go through an evaluation. Um, we have to, again, determine, does the child meet criteria, does its, this disability substantially limit a major life activity? And if so, then we write a plan. So it's a three-year, large cycle, and a yearly, annual, smaller cycle with the, the light pink arrow over to, to the plan.
And you guys will see, before we started, I passed out handouts that go into this process in very great detail. So Kristen gave you a quick overview, but the process itself is detailed pretty specifically there.
Yeah, thanks Andrea, yeah, it does, it goes into a great detail of, um, pretty much every bullet point that is required for a case manager, um, which are currently the school counselors, um, for a Section 504 plan. Um, and then this next slide talks about what are the expectations as a district, what are we, what do we expect, um, the case managers to do? Um, and some of the issues that we are seeing with those expectations. Um, and first is that we're expected to, to be trained. We're expected to know the law, the case managers, which are currently school counselors, are expected to be, um, trained and fluent in the law of Section 504. Um, we're expected to be consistent, uh, which is difficult across seven buildings, and the 13 school counselors to be consistent in making decisions, um, about, uh, appropriate accommodations, as well as eligibility. Um, it's also expected to be consistent with making decisions about the necessity of an accommodation, or does this substantially limit? That substantial word is very difficult, and when you have 13 people deciding if something is substantial, it makes it difficult to be consistent. Um, and then prog, and then monitoring accommodations. Um, there are some counselors that are able to do that on a bi-weekly, um, system or rotation, and others, it's once a year. We have to do it at the end of the year, that's the minimum, and that's what we're able to do. Um, so that, that's a concern. Um, the issues with this is that school counselors are not trained in any part of this process, as far as our, as part of our graduate program. Um, unlike, uh, a school psychologist who's been trained in conducting evaluations and writing reports in that fashion, school counselors do not have that training. Um, intervention specialists are trained in writing goals and objectives and progress monitoring, whereas school counselors are not trained in that. Um, and that second bullet point is that if we do go to a training, it's very inconsistent. We get mixed messages from different, um, vendors that are putting on, uh, training programs. So it's not consistent, again, even when we are trained. Sometimes, being a case manager for a Section 504 conflicts with our role as a school counselor in advocating for student concerns. Um, and Elena and, and Andrea are going to talk a little bit more about that, as well as that it provides, it consumes, it's an extensive amount of time um, that is required for this process, for a school counselor to then be pulled away from direct services with our students in order to case manage 504 plans. So I know that Elena's up next, and she's going to talk a little bit about our, um, numbers.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to apologize if there's background noise, I did my best to find a quiet space. Um, but I am attending a conference in, uh, Mississippi, so this is the best I could do without waking up, uh, the people in my room. So I apologize. Um, I wanted to start with our question, pop quiz, how many, um, the, the district currently has blank number of students on the five, on the Section 504 plan in grades K through 12? A, B, C, or D?
B. B.
B.
B.
Very good. Um, yes, the answer is B, 193. Um, this is a lot of students on, uh, 504 plans. What I want to show you is the data that, um, kind of illustrates what that looks like for the 13 school counselors. We collect data by using a, um, documentation tool called SCUDA. SCUDA is used so that we can, um, evaluate where our time is spent, and hopefully, um, look at that time in an effort to, um, adjust to national standards, as well as make sure that, that our students' needs are met in the district. Um, so as of May 6th, um, there were 193 students on Section 504 plans, this is before the, um, end of the school. So this data shows that, um, our school counselors spent 844 hours on those 193 plans that are, were issued in the district. Um, to kind of give you an idea about this number, um, for, uh, for the Section 504 plans, that averages out to about 15 students per, um, counselor. That can vary, um, but when we look at what the state allows for, um, IEPs, or, uh, per school psychologist, um, or, I'm sorry, case manager, intervention specialist at the other levels, um, it's, it is just about at that threshold, if not a little bit more. Um, and so, we want to, we want to make sure that we're meeting, we're truly meeting our students' needs, and giving them the best service, um, by not overloading that. School counselors, um, range about 13, I'm sorry, 13.5 to 106 hours per counselor. That's about four hours for each plan. That includes the, the, what Kristen, or I'm sorry, what Ms. Lee was saying about program managing, or case managing, um, writing the plan, maybe setting up the meeting, attending the meeting. And so, um, the, the important thing here is to see that 844 hours was taken away from direct student services, um, meaning counseling, group sessions, uh, contact and consultations. We can see that, um, in the next slide, the trend of 504s, um, is, is gaining momentum with the growth of our district. Uh, something to keep in mind. Most importantly, um, I think that it is best visualized in the following slide, school counselor use of time. And so to the left of this slide, what you're going to see is the American School Counselors Association model, for where our school counselors' time should be spent. So the green, blue, and yellow, um, chunks of time are services for students. The red chunk of time is, um, dedicated to, or allocated for that, uh, non-school counseling task. You can see at the elementary level, uh, this is much greater than maybe at the high school, where there's maybe some more, um, clerical, secretarial help to reduce maybe some of the phone calls and things. But nonetheless, the idea of this, um, graph is to visualize how much time is spent outside of what we could, how we could be servicing our students. So, um, again, when we look at 504s, this is a non-school counseling task, um, identified by the American School Counseling Association. Uh, as Ms. Lee mentioned, um, they are, we're not trained within our graduate program to, uh, perform those tasks. So we're probably spending a little bit more time making sure that we do it right, um, for our students.
All right, so I think this might be our last quiz question. We'll see how you guys do overall. So which, um, Section 504 violations result in which of the following?
I think A.
Yeah, all of the above.
Yeah, so a violation can result in any of those things. And as I noted on the next slide, if we have inconsistent decisions being made regarding eligibility, so maybe one counselor, again, coming back to, this isn't something they're trained in doing, is interpreting data in one way, and then another counselor's interpreting data in another way, and they're found eligible in one building, they transition to the next, and are now found ineligible with really the same data. That could result in a violation. Um, when accommodations are vague or not measurable, what happens then is staff members are implementing those differently. So how, what I may think of as extended time is maybe an extra five minutes, whereas someone else might think that means as long as the student needs. Uh, and then if a student's excluded from participation in an, in an activity or program, that would also be a violation. So for instance, if we have a student who requires special transportation per their 504, we have a field trip. For whatever reason, again, a gen ed class is going on a field trip, they forget that the student has special transportation, and that student's busing isn't set up, that's a violation. That's a violation. So all of those can result in a variety of different consequences. So as you saw on the quiz slide, you know, there are several different dispute resolution options, the internal agreement, the due process hearing, complaint to the Department of Education, or the lawsuit. We have board policies that address all of those and administrative guidelines that walk through all of them. There are a couple really unique situations that I think even add to the intensity of the process and what falls under 504. So one is manifestation determination review. This is the same as we would do under IDEA for a student in special education. So if there's a student who's suspended for more than 10 days, even if it's not in a row, if it's a pattern of removals, or they're recommended for expulsion, it's a required step in the disciplinary process to do a manifestation determination review to see if the disability has a causal factor in the behavior or the conduct in question. We've had a couple of those occur recently, and I went back and calculated up the time it took, and it was about 24 to 26 staff hours per case. And the facilitation of the process requires very specific training. So we're often pulling in other staff members to cover these for 504s, such as a school psychologist who does have that training, you know, and pulling that person away from their job. Another quick example that some of you that have been on the board a while may remember is if we have an OCR complaint, that can be very time intensive. It takes a lot of time and resources to complete the corrective action steps if we're found in violation. So a quick example I wanted to share of one of these that I inherited when I started in my position is there was a complaint filed back in January of 14, and it was due to failure to provide accommodations consistently across all settings, two accommodations. And so it was for a student that was transitioning between multiple teachers, and some classes were doing it, others were just saying, well, the student didn't really want to. So it was kind of left up to the student. It took until September of that year till the findings were issued, and we had to come up with a resolution agreement. After that, it was another four and a half years until that was completely wrapped up and essentially off the books. So within that time, we were required to provide some compensatory education to the student. We had to revise lots of board policies and administrative guidelines. I went back and looked. It was a total of five board policies, five administrative guidelines, and two district forms that had to be revised. And as you guys know, and some of you may remember doing the readings of those, that's a lot of back and forth. We would do a revision, we'd send it to OCR, they'd say, it's good, but add this too. And lots of back and forth, lots of time involved with district attorneys for that process. And then we also had to update all of our district 504 documents. We had to train staff on all the revised procedures and board policies once those were finally approved, and then providing notifications. So again, that spanned across five years and three different directors of special education. So that kind of shows you like someone stepping in and inheriting that along the way. So I know we're getting short on time, so I'm going to wrap it up here. A couple ideas we've been brainstorming for solutions to address these issues that we've talked about is the possibility of maybe a Section 504 coordinator. This was a resource in the district many years ago. There was Bob Phillips, a retired principal, did this part-time for the district for a couple of years. Another idea we came up with is maybe contracting with a local educational service center. There's pros and cons to that one. Looking at a teacher on special assignment or a TOSA, expanding some secretarial duties, which I think helps with the paperwork side of it, but not necessarily the compliance and implementation side. Looking at support from other district personnel. So like I said, sometimes we pull in our school psychologists, you know, getting some individuals with that targeted explicit training. However, I think that piece, like the others, would involve looking at an increase in staffing as well, because our current structure doesn't allow for that to be added to the plates of our school psychologists. So last, just a couple key takeaways. So per year, counselors are spending approximately 900 hours on Section 504s, which falls into that red, non-school counseling task zone. In less than 10 years, the number of students on Section 504 plans has increased significantly. Even though simple violations, like I said, just inconsistent implementation of one accommodation results in an intensive process and lots of time on the part of many staff members. Counselors are highly trained in addressing the social emotional needs of students, which is a priority for our district right now. They're not trained to fulfill the Section 504 case management role. We provide support and training, but it's just not something they were taught to do going through their graduate programs. And then reducing their Section 504 responsibilities would allow them to directly support and impact students in more meaningful ways. And I think as you guys are well aware, as we're recovering from the COVID-19 pandemic, this is more important than it ever has been before. So, sorry, I'm over a couple minutes. Any questions that you guys have?
I have a question.
Yes.
When you say 900 hours, is that a school year? Is that, what are you talking about?
Yep, that's per school year. So when we calculate up the number of hours that our counselors are spending on various tasks, that was as of, that 840-something was as of May 6th. We pulled that data. So since the beginning of this school year.
Okay.
Well, very well done. The information provided for us brought us up to date, and for myself, actually educating me on some concerns of the district.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think that the idea, I know there's things, the handout and the slide that showed the referral, the evaluation eligibility, the feedback review, case manager plan. Maybe, maybe just walk us through like a typical 504, what's really involved? So when you invite people to meetings, it sounds pretty easy to do, but kind of what steps have to be taken? Maybe just a quick overview.
Yeah. Do you mind if Kristin jumps in here? She could probably even better explain than I could.
Sure. So if we look at that handout that says steps in the Section 504 process, a typical student, I'm going to give an easy one, and that would be a student that has been, has a diagnosis for ADHD, which is very common. So that is part of that referral process. So a student, a parent comes to us and says, my son has been identified with ADHD, I want a Section 504. So we start with that referral. The parent referred the student for a Section 504. So we provide the paperwork that says, okay, you're making the referral, and we're, this is the consent form that you want to start an evaluation. Sometimes they have the documentation with them that says, the doctor says ADHD. Sometimes they do not. And so that might take the case manager an extra step in contacting that physician to get the actual diagnosis. We like to have that documentation in hand rather than just a hearsay, taking it from the parent saying, my child has ADHD. We like to have the physician diagnosis in hand so that we have that documentation. So then we have to say, do we suspect that this substantially limits the student's major life activity of, say, attention? Do we suspect that this child has a disability? And if we, as a parent and teacher and school counselor administrator team, say, I think we might need to move forward with an evaluation just to see how much it is impacting. We know that they have a diagnosis, what's the extent of that disability? So then we would initiate the evaluation. The evaluation comes from digging into lots of different material, that being what the parent is seeing at home, what the teachers are seeing in the classroom. It might be that we get additional information about what kind of attention problems we're seeing in the classroom. Then we look at the history of the student, the student's file. What kinds of scores are they getting on their exams? What kind of scores are they getting on their standards? So we're looking, digging into that file as well. We then pull the team back together, and after all of that information has been synthesized into an evaluation, we pull the team back together and say, we look at all of the data and decide as a team, does this child substantially have a substantial limitation for major one activity, a life activity? I mean, if we say yes, then we move on to the plan. And that doesn't happen at the same time. We say yes to that they are eligible, and then we have a second meeting that specifically talks about the plan and the accommodations. So from that data that we have from the evaluation, we look at what specifically needs to be accommodated. Is it extended time? Is it seating? Is it breaks? Is it a fidget? Is it different kinds of seating? So what does the child need so that they can access the curriculum? Once we kind of have a plan in place, we meet a second time, and we go through those accommodations. Sometimes we're adjusting and revising and tweaking those accommodations as we're sitting at that plan. We have a general idea of what accommodations the student might need, but maybe the parent has a different idea, and we never thought of that. Oh, that works at home, let's include that here at school. So we meet and we talk about what specific accommodations that student would need. And then as the plan is implemented, we do the case management, which is we have to inform all of the teachers, make sure that everyone is consistently implementing the accommodations as written, because as Andrea mentioned, if someone's not being consistent, that causes problems for us. We have to make sure that the students are using the accommodations. And if they refuse to make, to use those accommodations, then we have to meet again with the parent and the school staff and the administrator to adjust the 504 to meet that student's needs. And we're constantly, constantly looking at data, what accommodations are being used? If it's an extended time, you know, how much time are they using? Do they need double time? Do they need time and a half? Do they need the rest of the day for extended time? And then every single year, we would get feedback with the older students in high school, sometimes that's feedback from students, but typically it's from parents, teachers. And again, sometimes if it's more health-related, it's with the school nurse, how many visits have they made to the clinic? If it's attendance issue, we would also get feedback from the attendance secretary as well. So that's a typical student on, with ADHD, cycle of evaluation, plan, progress monitoring, and feedback.
Thank you, Kristin.
Yep.
Yeah, I sit here and listen to this, and, you know, having sat on the board for as long as I have, and to hear, you know, our counselors are doing things that they weren't necessarily educated to do, and we're not able to do it consistently, and I'm looking at the chart of the growth that's in here. It's like, oh my gosh, what, you know, it feels like there's something really wrong here. But then I also go back to comments I've gotten from current parents and past parents whose children are on 504s who have been incredibly successful post-graduation and have like thanked the district, thanked me, I'm just on the board, but, you know, been so thankful for the work that has been done in this 504 space. So I'm just, you know, I'm trying to reconcile, and I think I know what the answer is, you know, with all the challenges, you guys do it really, really well. So thank you for that. But I also see, you know, there's a tipping point, there's a, you know, there are certainly headwinds that, you know, the results we have been getting are at risk of not getting them in the future. So I don't know that I have a question there other than, you know, how do you guys do it so well? Again, I think I know, but...
And I think part of that goes along to the evolution over time. When, you know, we had a lot fewer, or quite a bit fewer 504s in the district, and each counselor maybe had three or four to do a year. I think it was very different than now, you know, there are some that have 20-plus. And I think that kind of tips the scales a little bit too, when it's, you know, just something they do a little bit of, to where it's a major significant portion of their jobs now. So I think that is a piece of it too, and I think what the counselors would probably say is there's other areas of their job that are suffering because of it.
Just thinking about that, I think it was August 19th of 2019 when Mrs. Reddick, the school nurse, came in and talked to the board, and she mentioned all the anxiety issues that students were coming to the nursing department with, and the guidance counselors were talking about the anxiety issues. This was pre-pandemic. Then we read about the pandemic and the anxiety issues and all the different mental health issues that happened, come to our students. Between 11 and 17-year-olds was very specifically an age group they talked about. And then I hear guidance counselors, cross out the word guidance, it's school counselors, because now of any time, our students need all hands on deck, the school counselors spending time with those issues of the mental health issues and some of the anxiety issues that are out there. So what a, what a great idea to have someone coordinate 504s, take it off the hands of the school counselors so they can do what they're trained to do. I also, another statistic here that was interesting, I think before, guidance counselors were doing school scheduling, changing classes in the fall, college admissions. Where was the help with the student, with the issues that we need to help them with today? So that's gone, and we need to remove the 504s from them too, and get a coordinator to take care of that too. Again, who's it going to benefit? Our students. And that's what we're all about here in our district. So I think it's a great move to make, from my estimation, looking at the statistics that are out there, particularly after the pandemic's taken place. Currently, we're still in a pandemic, but I think that we're moving in the right direction with this for our students.
And Mr. Pullman, to your point, I still see the counselors involved with those students, but more so from a student advocate role. So you have a student with anxiety who's on a Section 504 plan, and rather than being the paperwork data collection, holding people accountable, they're coming in as the student advocate and as a support service for the students.
I'm thinking too, the teachers. If the counselors aren't trained for this, surely the teachers, I mean, and maybe I'm being selfish because I was one, but this is an added burden on our teachers too, to have, to have to manage all of this. And if they're getting fed all these different things and directions of what to do, as you were explaining Andrea, that I can certainly see where this is going to be driving them nuts, and it's becoming a shorter and shorter trip, I'm sure. I definitely see the value, and as Ray pointed out, we've divvied off these other jobs so that counselors can be counselors and psychologists can be psychologists. It does make sense if we can get somebody who's the lead dog in this that can make things consistent. I can only think that this has got to help our teachers, because like you said on that one case that you inherited, and welcome to the baptism by fire program. It seems like when you've got multiple teachers, and that seems to be the case even in elementary, where we've got multiple teachers doing things for a student, that that's got to help bring consistency with that umbrella if you've got somebody leading that show. It makes it very understandable to me why teachers are trying to reduce the number of students in their classroom if they have to manage all these different things that are coming their way. I would think this would be a very, and again, we're jumping ahead on the schedule, we're talking about the hiring of a 504 director, but there's so many indications that this is just the most logical and needed approach, because we haven't hired an administrator in quite a while, have we? I'm trying to remember what you sent us. There wasn't...
The last time that we, we had, our HR director was also our operations person. So when she retired...
That was it.
So that was...
So we had to split our in two.
Yeah, that was three or four years ago. So we've added with growth, probably 24 to 25 teaching positions during that time. So, you know, as the enrollment rises, the need for, we added a high school counselor during that time because... during that time, because the growth happens, we've added other positions along the way. And, you know, looking at the data, looking at the needs, looking at the trends and the challenges that students face, not only with 504, but also under the umbrella of student wellness, there's a lot of, a lot more than seven years ago than 10 years ago, for sure.
Does this new position, does that get paid with some of the governor's wellness funds?
So Pam and I have had a conversation about it. So the governor, the last annual budget, the amount of base funding that we received was frozen. So we've been on a freeze with the $6,020 that the state begins with. We don't receive that, we actually receive about $2,900, but it didn't change. But what the governor did do was take money outside the formula and say, these are funds that you can use for these qualified items relative to student success and wellness. So we have money that has not been allocated yet that would also apply to this. When we planned the levy back in 2019, we did consider this, because we heard and we were planning for the future. And we put some things on that list of things that we wanted to do to take things off of, you know, the plates of counselors. So, yes, we do have some state funds that are designated for that.
Excellent.
You know, there's a quote, if I could read this, from an article I received, well, actually, all of us did, the governor. But we talk about our school district's mission of all students achieving, all students, well, here's a statement. "Mental health and social emotional wellness are becoming widely recognized as key influence on student's success and health in the classroom and in life." And I think that's the direction we're heading here, we need to head here, because it is a different classroom, it is a different environment that we're in, and again, the pandemic didn't help any of that. Before pandemic, we were increasing the mental health conditions, over 9% more increase in concerns. So I'll just leave you with that.
Thank you, guys.
All right, well, thank both of you, appreciate you jumping in this morning.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. It takes us then to item 3.2 with the administrative contract for the discussion we've, actually the presentation just made. Mr. Haas, anything else you wanted to address with that?
No, this, I think, the evolution of pupil services, which serves, initially, it serves students who are on IEPs, and I think we're probably, and Andrea stepped away, so I'll be comfortable in quoting, she can correct me, but we're probably just under about 12% of our students...
On IEPs.
On IEPs.
Closer to 11.
Okay, so about 11% on IEPs. So with a district of about 5,500 students, you can begin to imagine, you know, the numbers of students. And we've been pretty consistent with that number, I think it's been a pretty stable number. What we've seen is, with a lot of the interventions we've done, a lot of the learning disability and things that we saw years ago, those students haven't hit the IEPs because we're doing a lot of intensive interventions. You've heard things about Swarm and things like that, so that's made a big difference. However, the students who are more involved, that have more needs, we've seen that number grow. And so with that challenge, we've added staff along the years where we had a pupil services director, and then we added a teacher on special assignment. In fact, Ms. Price was that person, she was still considered in the union, and that was back in 2008, I believe, where it was a position that, you know, to help out. And things have certainly grown since that time. And then two years ago, we split Sarah Stockwell, who was in pupil services, Dr. Glessor was the assistant, and we came to the board and said, you know, we're not spending enough time on these other things that are taking more and more time away. So by separating these, 504s went with Mrs. Stockwell, IEP stayed with Mrs. Glessor. And since that time, we've just seen this, the student wellness piece, the counseling, the mental health, those pieces have really expanded. And we hear about those, and we talk about suicide ideation, and homelessness, and poverty, and those kinds of barriers to learning. And that's what, you know, Sarah was really involved with. You've heard her talk about, you know, when we were all remote, getting, you know, she was the one working to get internet access to families that didn't, so they can continue to learn at home. So, you know, this is just that next step in that evolution. So this person, Dr. Glessor, has assistants that support her, and Mrs. Stockwell hasn't. So this position would fall under Mrs. Stockwell's purview and continue to expand in that role.
Is the position, the two-year contract for $96,000, is that for two years or $96,000 per year?
So the salary would be $96,000 per year, and we have an administrative salary schedule. So the assistant directors that are in the pupil services area, they're in that same salary range, so it falls in line with the duties and responsibilities of existing administrators, and falls into that range.
Okay, so that's per year?
Yes.
Okay, we're looking at item 3.2, which would be the administrative contract. Can we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to have the delay of, what are we calling it, five? No, three? I'm sorry, what did we change it to?
Right now, Kelly, we're having discussion on the motion that's been made. We have a first and a second, and accept item 3-2, 3.2. Any discussion on that item?
Yes, I'd like to discuss it.
Okay.
Well, I have a concern, because this position is twofold. Of course, we just saw this presentation today on the 504s, and I think there's alternate solutions than hiring a person that would fulfill this position. They mentioned there was part-time people that have done it in the past, and it looks like from the hours they gave us, it's about 22.5 hours a week that this position would have. It's the second piece of this, which I don't feel, as a board, we've even really discussed, you know, presentations have been made, but I feel that this needs to be addressed and brought for public comment, which obviously at a work session can't. So I feel that this position should be delayed until the following meeting, where we can get a chance to have public awareness and public participation. Because one part of this job is 504s, and the other is DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that's the piece that I have some concerns about.
But I think also, the position...
Therefore, if you break it down, perhaps, we don't need to hire a full-time position, we just maybe could hire a part-time position to fulfill the need for the 504s.
Anybody else?
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I've got so many things running through my head, it's coming out word vomit, and I can't figure out what I'm trying to say. Is there a reason why we, that this is on the agenda now instead of at a full session? Usually, I mean, this isn't unusual at this time of year. Wasn't this because of her move from another district to us and the contractual law thingy?
Right, so one of the things that you'll notice, there's other personnel actions on the agenda today, because school's out, so we're beginning to lose that ability to go through the hiring process. So in Ohio, staff, teachers, administrators have until July 10th to leave their current contract if they are hired by another district. So from the end of school to July 10th, administrators, in this case, are allowed to leave, and that works out for them. After July 10th, then what happens is that those administrators then have to go to their board and ask for, ask for a release. So what happens is when positions, like administrative positions, get posted after July 10th, it becomes something that administrators begin to get reluctant in applying, unless there's something that is, I mean, obviously, they still do, but there's another conversation that has to happen. Even to throw your hat in the ring, you have to let your folks know that this is a possibility, and that is a challenge. So that's why you see, not only in Perrysburg, but other districts, right at this time, a big rush. So teachers are the same thing. And also, when we're bringing somebody on from another place, that school district then has to begin that process. And they're trying to work under that July 10th window. This position is, you know, we mentioned a few things about this position. The 504 is the largest group of it. Diversity, equity, inclusion is another part of it. Homelessness is another part of it. There's the migrant grants that we have to manage, that's another part of it. Working with the counselors, because Mrs. Stockwell is a person who actually, you know, rounds up all the counselors and tries to, on a monthly basis, you know, bring issues up. So there's a lot more to this piece than simply just those two things. It is supporting all those things, and the biggest bulk of it is a benefit to the building, you know, counselors that we have. When Mr. Phillips did it, he was an administrator, because administrators are part of the 504 process, they understand it. And we got to a point here where a part-time person here, a part-time person there, just wasn't cutting it, and that's when we began to move in this direction. So we're always very reluctant to bring forward positions, we always try to justify, we're always very concerned about, especially administrative positions. But at this point in time, a delay to, you know, would cause us to move into June, into the beginning of the third week in June, and there's no resolution at that point in time, we're not sure what that may mean to, you know, the candidate or anything like that. The need's not going to change, whether the person is here or not here. What you heard today, what was described today, in that growing area, is not going to change between now and then. And we've looked at other options, we've used other options, and with the numbers that we're seeing. And we're talking about 70 students new to this process in the last roughly seven years. So in another five years, what is that going to do? And she used the easy one, which was ADHD, but we have some that are very complicated. And, you know, we heard a presentation a while ago before COVID about students who are diabetic, and the nurses were talking about those students that were coming to them, remember, with all the different kinds of needs. Many of those students are on 504, because those medical conditions are something that does impact the classroom. Those are the complicated ones. And we've seen those more involved situations expand too, so...
So what I'm hearing is that we're doing this now partly out of a courtesy to the timeline, so that the other place that she's coming from has time to fill her spot? I understand, I understand that. The thing that Kelly was mentioning about the diversity, equity, inclusion, I've never really heard it called DEI before, so I got thrown by yet another acronym. Somebody should write a book of all the acronyms that education uses, and make it electronic, because it'll change every day. But it's, it's not just working with the CQ community idea. That's basically a club, right? That's not a department, or it's basically, and I use the term loosely, club, but that's basically what that is. That's what Dawn does, right? Dawn Berks?
Right, so we have the CQ team, which Sarah is involved with, and we have co-chairs, which are teachers or counselors, staff that does that. There's representatives from every group. And, you know, essentially, the mission that the board has set out, which is ensuring all students achieve their greatest potential, what, how do we do that? We do really well in Perrysburg with 25 of the 27 kids in every classroom. But number 26 and number 27 in that classroom might be coming with a different set of circumstances. They may be coming to school with hunger, they may be part of a family that has a parent that is deployed in the military, which brings unique circumstances to that child. There might be other factors, disability, we've talked about that this morning. What are we doing as a district to make sure that all 27 out of 27 are achieving their greatest potential? And so what we try to do is we work with staff to give them the tools, the lenses to see students for what they are, to better understand them, to make sure that we're able to, that they feel valued when they come into the school and into the classroom. So any training that we do from CQ is trying to spread that understanding of what our students need. We had a professional development day on May 4th, and it was a day dedicated, the CQ team hosted this, they do one PD a day, or one PD a year. One PD a day would be a lot. And the most impactful thing of that entire day, in my opinion, was a student panel that they put together, where students talked about their experiences. So we had a student with Down syndrome, who was able to talk about their experience as a student, and a student who, you know, wears a hibja, and a student that is, was black, and a student who has other challenges. And we were able to hear what their experience was like. That's the only way we're going to get better at meeting the students' needs, is being open to understand where those students are, and what can we do to make them better. There isn't, that is our mission, ensuring all students achieve their greatest potential, and finding the tools to do that. As a school district, you know, like the country, like the state, you know, the, what kids look like coming into school is changing. In the last eight years, Perrysburg has gone from an 89% white student body to 80%. We have international companies that are headquartered right here in Perrysburg and around us that are bringing in people from all over, and they're choosing Perrysburg as the place they want their children to be. Our teaching staff is 96.5% white. So cultural intelligence, CQ, is just understanding the different cultures of the students that we're seeing. It's not saying that we have to teach those things, it's not saying that we have to necessarily agree with the students and what they do, but when they're in our classrooms, we have to make sure they feel valued, that they feel respected and safe. And when they do that, they're better learners. And you can go home and do whatever, and have whatever feelings that you have, and that's fine, but when they're in the classroom, it's up to us to make sure that they're going to be successful. So anything that we can do to help our teachers have tools to understand the needs of those students, then we're going to do those things. And I know there's been a lot of talk about critical race theory, I never heard that phrase before, I've been in education for 29 years, I've never heard critical race theory before until just a couple of months ago. There isn't a textbook or some kind of curriculum that this board's adopted for that. I don't even know what it is, it's hard to explain when people call. But I do know what we do, I do know what we do, and that is, we want all students to come to school and have a great experience, to live our mission, ensuring all students achieve their greatest potential. And we know that some kids are coming, and there's obstacles in their way, and we want our staff to be aware of those and to take different steps. And when they're on the clock here, that's our expectation, is to do the very best we can for them.
So if a teacher is sensing that something's out of balance in her classroom, then she could go to this lady, this director...
Right.
And say, I'm having some difficulties, that would be something that, I'm visualizing that that would be something that that director could help with...
Right.
And getting the people in place to help that student then.
Absolutely.
And it wouldn't be a total burden on the teacher, I mean, ultimately, she's frontline, she or he, sorry, are responsible for that student, but this would be another resource for the teacher to do that ensuring, to make sure that everybody's all together.
Yeah.
I think that, good question, Sue, and I think the explanation, I've always felt the cultural intelligence, since I've attended some of those PD days and hear these students talk, and the classroom that I taught in is not the same classroom that teachers are teaching today. It's changed, the culture's changed, when I say it, but the race has changed, the skin color's changed, diversity's changed, we're talking about experiences the students are bringing to the classroom. Teaching the mathematics has not changed, that has not changed. The Pythagorean theorem has not changed. Those that are receiving it have changed. And that's all we're saying, is that we're trying to get our, the district is trying to get our staff understanding the ways that you can still present to all populations, all culture, all... all culture, all race. It is not about the political side of things that we're seeing out there that's taken place lately in our country. So that, with that, I'm comfortable knowing that the cultural intelligence quotient that we've come up with in this district has served our student population well. And I can only think, as a board member, that's what I'm here for, what can we do to help serve our student population the best that we can so that we can accomplish our school's district's mission? So I appreciate this, again, out-of-the-box thinking to provide the 504 coordinator with the CQ coordinator to help implement things that'll, again, help our students.
Yeah, and those, those things that we're looking at, you know, we're, again, when we, 2019, we looked at those things that were taking up that time. One of the things that we may be coming back to, and this could be a very different kind of position, but we know in the elementary ranks, the counselors are also testing coordinators, and that's something probably in a year or two we'll be coming back to the board, just like we're talking about now, saying, you know, we have counselors that are handing out state tests and coordinating it, and is that a good use of their time? Or is that something that maybe a clerical person could run point on? So we're always thinking about those things, but it, you know, we're reaching a point where we bring up those conversations, and that's what led us here for this area.
I'd probably, I'd probably like to tweak a little bit of the language too. Gretchen and I serve on the CQ committee, or we get to participate, the CQ team's work, and, yeah, you refer to it as a club, it's a pretty high, if it's a club, it's a pretty high-functioning club.
Yeah.
A lot of great professionals, I mean, I, I, I lose count how many people are on that call that goes, you know, well after school hours, a bunch of caring professionals that are really working hard to try and make sure that all of their students can bring their best selves to the classroom every day. You know, it's really commendable work. And I am familiar with the word DEI because it's becoming common vernacular outside of academia. These are issues in my own workplace that we are talking about, discussing, so, you know, there's a, what the future workforce in Northwest Ohio is going to look like is important too. And we're starting to address that in the school systems, you know, in education. So if this position, if this position that we're looking at contributes 10, 20, 30, 40% of their time to help advance that agenda a little bit further, it has my support.
We have a first and a second motion, do we have any more discussion?
Oh, I still, I wanted to make a comment. Because I, this, this diversity, equity, and inclusion is critical race theory. And Tom, Critical Race Theory, the book that the district has been reading, that Abram Kendi, he's the Critical Race Theory guru. So I think these words that are used sometimes to describe it, and people don't really understand or know what it is, and the minute we bring and hire somebody, even part-time, that is introducing Critical Race Theory into Perrysburg schools.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Would you please explain to me in 30 words, what is Critical Race Theory?
Did you read the handout that I gave you-
I certainly did, and I found not one single definition. I've read it three times, and I want to know what your definition is of Critical Race Theory? And how it applies to Perrysburg schools?
Well-
And what? I mean, I have never known us to teach any religion, any social customs, I, we don't-
Well, just think of this, do you remember when we did that bias at our retreat? We did a bias project. They came in and they talked about unconscious bias.
Yeah.
Do you remember that?
I do.
What?
I do.
Okay, so there, when you do that, you are saying you have these biases, unconscious, and then there's another word for it. And that, when you think of those things, they're implying that we all have a racist, all ties into, the Critical Race Theory is basically an academic discipline formulated, started in the 1990s. It's a theory on class conflict. So you have oppressed and the oppressors, and so you, it all ties into this demographic that is unrepresented, and that needs to be represented. And schools are not for ideology, that's the problem I have, they're for education. And CRT goes basically against everything, if you look at what Martin Luther King said, where you should not be judged by the color of your skin, but by the content of your character. And so by, by looking at just the color of the skin, that's where I have the problem.
Explain to me one time where this board has made a decision based on the color of someone's skin. Just one example.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying the board is. I'm saying, when you introduce this into the classroom, or teachers are talking about it, and you're referring to a book that is the Critical Race Theory guru, that right now, the district, I think it's called Stamped, Tom, do you know the name of it?
So, so the-
You refer to it in your PowerPoint presentation.
So, the-
Oh, Stamped, From the Beginning, The Civically Engaged Classroom Anti-Racist Conversation Series by Ingram Kendi. Google him, look him up.
So, we've done-
That is the book right now, the ongoing employee education.
So the CQ team has different book studies that run throughout, so that is one of the books that are being read, it's called Stamped, not Stamped, so-
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't understand what she was saying.
Yeah.
Do you remember the name of the author?
It's Dr. Kendi.
Dr. Kendi?
Yeah, yeah.
K-E-N-D-I?
Abram Kendi.
Yeah.
K-N, K-E-N-D-I.
So, I think-
He is basically the Critical Race Theory guru.
If I could interject here-
It's on my Kindle, it looks like this, I can forward it to you if you want.
Okay.
And I'm interested in talking to whomever wants to talk about this book, it certainly raises some very interesting arguments about our history.
Again, the reason we're doing this is, is, you know, the activity that we did with, at the board retreat, where we talked about personal bias, I'm biased to people who drive Fords. My dad's retired Ford guy, I like Fords, and I'm biased that way.
So you don't leave and fix or repair daily? I don't.
We have oil spots in our driveway, but that's okay.
Oh, that's okay.
So I think the, so going from bias to racism, to being racist, I think is a pretty big jump. And I think it's just an activity that was done just for people to, not, we don't want that student, again, 26 and 27, those two kids in the classroom, who might be struggling in different ways, we want them to succeed, we all agree on that. We shouldn't have them succeed at the expense of any other student. And we're really, really deliberate about that, because we can't have winners and losers that, what we do want is that teacher in that classroom to be able to understand that student and lift them up to make sure that they feel valued, respected, that's it. And if you can understand a little bit about that student's perspective, you might not agree with it. You know, a student who might be in your classroom who is, who's gay, you as a person may have a very different feeling about that, and that's fine, but when that student is in your classroom, you need to be able to understand maybe their perspective, why are they feeling nervous or scared? And as an educator, if you can understand that better, you're going to make a connection with that student. Now, you can leave school and you can pray for that student, or whatever it is that you feel, your personal, your responses, but when that student's in your classroom, we owe it to that student and their family to make sure that we have an understanding to try to reach out. So if that teacher is reading a book about maybe something that that student values, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. It's a thing that we want to do to try to connect with kids, and that's the bottom line of all the work that we're doing. We appreciate our community, we value what they have to say, we love our country, all those things are part of what we do every single day. We don't teach Critical Race Theory, we teach the Ohio standards, and we do a great job of it. And we're going to continue to do that, it's not going to change.
Kelly, would you agree to, because of the timing of this, let's go ahead and allow this person to come in because there is such a definitive need for her, and we can monitor this, this area with the CQ community and just monitor it as active board members. Maybe that can be pulled off her plate and it can remain with that. But I, as a teacher, I see a very valuable resource in her that if I see trouble brewing in my classroom, I would be able to go to her for that. But, I mean, I see a need where we should be voting for this position, our 504s and all of that type of added work onto our staff is just going to get continually increasing. It's not going, it's not going to become less, it's just going to keep going up, as the trajectory showed. So I would like to say, let's go ahead, I would like to call, oh-
Call the question.
Call the question, thank you, I was going to say point of order, and I knew that was wrong, call the question in light that we can continue to monitor how that is going to fit into this person's job description.
Well, I just think we haven't looked at the options of hiring somebody that's part-time to fill the 504. It's unfortunate that now these two things have been separated, because obviously, there's a need for a 504, but I can't agree that there's a need for a DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, person.
I would also assist the board to call the question.
So, I don't feel like-
We have a call for the question.
As a district, we've looked at those options.
We have a first and a second for the motion to accept, and it's time for roll call.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Laramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
No.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes, motion carries. And just to follow up with that, as a member of this board, I know the value that CQ has brought to Perrysburg Schools District and how it's been monitored, and how it's been directed, and how we've looked at it, and who's benefited by our students. We're not getting into the political, nor have we, with what's been passed out or what's been talked about in the state of Ohio. We do follow the school's standards for our education of our students, and certainly we could entertain a discussion at some point about the concern that Mrs. Eubank has raised. But again, I stand for and support wholeheartedly the CQ's community and all the work that's gone into that, for our school district. And I think we have to make sure we draw the line of the sand here between what we're doing and what's being said out there about what we're doing. So I just want to add that as comments. That takes us to the next item, which takes us to the consent agenda.
I'd like to wish Gretchen safe travels. Thank you, I'm sorry I have to leave.
Yeah, be safe, Gretchen. That takes us up to, if you look, we removed item 54, 53, so it takes us up to item 57, or 58 and 59 would become, what, 58, 57?
Don't we have to vote on the, approving the consent agenda?
Oh, we do have to, yeah, I'm going through those items though.
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to tell you that.
Sorry.
So we removed, we removed item 53, so everything else falls in line. So we have the resignations there, we have the contracts, so do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Well, if I, if I could, I know, I know Pam's resignation is part of the consent agenda, so on behalf of the staff here and students, Pam, just want to say thank you for all of your service. I know it's a bittersweet moment, and it's kind of a homecoming to you and your family and having everything in one place, but, you know, the years that you came to us, things were not great here in that area, across the hallway, as we say, and you've left us in much better shape than we were in when you began, and that's a credit to you and your leadership, and you've got a great spirit, and I know Finley's lucky to have you coming their way, so thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you very much, it's been an honor and a privilege to be, you know, a part of the Jacket Way.
Again, thank you, Mrs. Harrington.
All right, I was trying to, it was appropriate, Tom, now we're going to get all weepy.
Yeah.
I'll still call you.
Did we get a first and a second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Laramer?
Yes.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes, motion carries. And then we have some other items for consideration, item six, the approval for the Huskieson Athletic Center, and the overnight trip for the cheerleaders here. Any comments, Tom, on those?
The second floor bids came in, they were well under the amount that we had projected. We received $375,000 from the athletic boosters, and those funds are being used to finish the second floor, so that takes a step forward there. And we just do have overnight trips, which are required to be approval. It's July 8th and 11th, so we wanted to make sure it was approved before, we didn't want to, we wanted people to plan, so we brought it to this meeting versus the one in June later on, because that makes it a pretty tight timeline. So with things opening up, which is a great thing, you know, these things will start popping up again, and that's exciting.
Okay, motion to accept?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubank?
Yes.
Ms. Laramer?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. It takes us item seven for board discussion, any other board discussion?
I move, adjourned.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennington?
Yes.
Ms. Laramer?
Yes.
Ms. Eubank?
Yes.
Mr. Pullman?
Yes. Thank you very much for attending, and y'all have a good day. Meeting's adjourned.